Good evening. Welcome to the November 21st, 2016 Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Vince Messina from the Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. Please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let's pray together, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the measure of health that's ours by your grace. Lord, we would just pray that for every action and every item of business this evening on the agenda, that you would give wisdom and discernment needed to make the proper decisions for the better and the welfare of each and every one of us, Father. We thank you for the city of Troy and for the opportunity to live and work in such a city. And, Father, we do pray, especially this evening, for those of our first responders, especially those of our police force, Father, and also those men and women across our country who are protecting us, Father. We pray for those families who have recently suffered loss, for those officers killed in the line of duty. And, Father, we just pray that you would watch over all that takes place this evening. And we thank you. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Pastor, for those words. Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present. There is a yellow sheet on the council table as a replacement for B, Section B. And I will read the resolution. Resolved that Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Ed Pennington at the special city council meeting of November 18th, 2016 due to work obligations. By the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we excuse the absence of Councilman Pennington at the special city council meeting of November the 18th, 2016 due to work obligations. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening. C1 is a presentation to Kathy Russ, the library director for the Troy Public Libraries, and will be making a presentation regarding a citation of excellence award. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, City Council. I am so delighted to be here with you tonight to talk to you about the award that the Troy Public Library received on October 28th at the Michigan Library Association Conference. The Troy Library was one of the two libraries in the state to receive the Citation of Excellence, so we received this beautiful trophy. I love this. It's so pretty. And we also received a $1,000 award. And this award was given to us in recognition of Troy Library's services to teens. The state librarian made a point of saying that most libraries, and I'm sorry to say this, but most libraries want to exclude the teens because they're kind of loud and they're kind of rowdy. But he was so, he just thought it was great that Troy Library embraces our teens. And from the teen advisory board to the programs, our teens mentoring, the tweens coming up, they helped us to redo the teen area. We really do try to include them and we value their opinion and their input because I really feel strongly that it helps make the library a better place. So what I want to do is make a special mention of Olivia Olson, our teen librarian, who works with these kids and does such a fabulous job. But I really feel like this is a community award because the teens do so much for the library, but their parents allow them to do it. And the friends of the library fund the programs. And we receive support for all we do at the library from city administration, from city council, and the community who come in and use the library. So I hope everyone will come and see this beautiful award. I will share it with everyone. It's going to go in our display case, and thank you for allowing me to talk to you about it tonight.
Thank you, Kathy. Congratulations. Seems like the library is continuing to get awards all the time, so that's a reflection on your work. Thank you.
Thanks.
You might as well just stay there.
I'm back.
C2 is a presentation to City Council on the status of Detroit Library's Endowment Fund.
All right. Well, I have some really great news. We had launched the Endowment Fund on September 19th with a goal of reaching $20,000 by December 31st. And as you know, the Endowment Fund is a subgroup of the Troy Community Foundation, and Mr. Doug Teetz helped me get the Endowment Fund started. So our goal was $20,000 by December 31st, and I was going to come to you tonight and tell you that we were at $19,960, and then Mr. Worpatinsky just handed me $50. And I wondered if it was appropriate to accept money at a city council meeting, but it's for the Endowment Fund. It really is. So I'll go deposit it when I go back. So we are now, I guess, at $20,010. So yay! But don't let that, the fact that we are at our goal, stop anyone out there from contributing. This is an ongoing project, and I'm also happy to report that we can now accept credit card donations via the library's website. So I hope that if people are interested in giving, that they'll take advantage of that. And as always, if anybody has any questions, I'm available to talk, answer questions, whatever you need to know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Didn't take you long to hit your goal. I mean, that's incredible.
I think it is a testament to this community, so, so many generous, wonderful people. It's really been, it's every day, it's my assistant said, "Every day is like Christmas." And I said, "But every day it's just a reason to get out of bed because it's so clear that the library means something to people," and I appreciate that.
Thank you. So don't go too far. C3?
Okay.
A presentation to the City Council on the status of Troy's Library's Small Business Week promotion, so welcome back.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm delighted to be here to talk to you about the Troy Library's Small Business Week promotion. The city, as you're going to hear about, is recognizing Small Business Saturday, and the Troy Library wanted to be a part of that because we support small business and we want to encourage people to get out and shop, but shop small and shop local. So, starting tomorrow, actually, we're going to do a small, we're going to go one better and do Small Business Week. Starting tomorrow, November 22nd, and continuing through Wednesday, November 30th, if you take a selfie at any small business in Troy and post it on TPL's Twitter, Facebook page, you will be entered into a drawing for a Kindle. And we'll do the drawing on December 1st. Information about that is on the library's website and also on our Facebook page, and you can have as many entries as you want. So if you go to 10 businesses during this time, that's great. If you go to 20, that's great. If you go to 50, you have 50 entries. We just really want, you know, if you're out there on Black Friday, you stop by and have something to eat somewhere, take a selfie, post it, and you'll get an entry into a Kindle or a Kindle. So we have a display at the library with lots of free giveaways like pens and bandanas and pet bandanas and stickers and crowns for the kids, and the first 150 people will receive this cute little tote bag. So while supplies last, and you can fill it up, go shopping in Troy and fill up this bag. So we just really want people to shop small, shop local, shop Troy.
Great. Thanks again.
All right. So I will leave you now.
That's okay. I'll do C4.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome to hang around because it's a piggyback on to what you just talked about. But thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, everyone.
C4 is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, and I'd like to make the presentation to Ara Tukuzian, the CEO and President of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. And if Ara would meet me at the podium, I'd like to present this to you. It's your better side. So you say.
So I say.
Nice to see you, Ara.
Nice to see you, Mayor.
It's a privilege for me to present this proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is November the 26th, 2016. And if I could, I'd like to read this into the record because I do think it indicates how important small business is to not only our community but to everyone. So whereas the city of Troy celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States representing more than 99% of American employer firms, creating more than 2/3 of the net new jobs and generating 46% of private gross domestic product. And whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas 87% of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas the city of Troy and the Troy Chamber of Commerce support our local businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Whereas the Troy Public Library is a neighborhood champion sponsoring local business participation within our community. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy City Council hereby proclaims Saturday, November 26th, 2016, as Small Business Saturday in Troy, Michigan. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy and the Troy Chamber of Commerce urges the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed this 21st day of November, 2016, signed by myself and all members of the City Council. It's our pleasure, Ara, to congratulate the chamber as being part of a great Small Business Saturday. I know they make up a large part of the commerce, for sure. So congratulations on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for recognizing the importance of small business and really just to underscore that, you know, 'tis the season for a lot of holiday shopping. And we want to encourage residents to go beyond, obviously, this Saturday and really to shop local. I mean, when you look at our economy and what really drives the economy, our local business does drive our economy. So we support the Troy Public Library's endeavor in doing Small Business Saturday, and there's a number of chamber members we know that are sort of on this list. I would only ask to that, you know, I think it's very easy when we get into the holiday season that we order online or we shop just at the big box locations. And I would really encourage you to really look at the small businesses here within Troy, whether it's a gift certificate or something. There definitely is something that you can buy local, give to a family member or an employee. You could go on to troychamber.com to see the businesses that we represent in the area. And with that, thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. There are no mayoral appointments this evening for I-1, but we have one city council appointment for I-1B, and I will call on Mayor Protem Hoderek for that appointment.
I just lost my page.
We're just going to do the one appointment for the ZBA. The other ones were already appointed last week.
Okay. Pardon my confusion. I'm new to this. Now I just lost this again.
No, everyone thinks this is so easy.
Is it? I'll take this opportunity to thank Councilman Pennington for her services, the Mayor Protem. It isn't easy to make the transition, so thank you for your patience with me. The appointment tonight is for Travis Mahalik for the alternate. The term expires January 31st, 2018, and I'd like to move that appointment.
Support by Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman Baker that we appoint Travis Mahalik to the ZBA, which is the zoning board of appeals, as the alternate for the term that expires 1/31/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. That concludes the appointments this evening. There are no nominations from the mayor position or city council. So we move to I-3. There is no closed session request this evening, which takes us to I-4, which is the addition of six police officers. I see Chief Gary Mayer is coming to the podium to introduce this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us here today. With me today is Lieutenant Tom Gordon. I brought Tom because Tom is in charge of all the hiring for the police department in case there's any hiring questions that came up. We're here tonight to talk about the additional uniform personnel for the police department. Just to refresh everybody's memory for the timeline is we started this process back in July when the city council discussed some of the issues on police officer security and safety because of some of the tragedies that have been going on in our country regarding police officers. On the 22nd, we came back and provided a presentation of ideas after polling the police officers and the people that work for the police department. Based on that, we came up with three main areas we were focusing on, which is the fencing project, the additional personnel, discussing our succession planning, and the final of the three was individual patrol rifle purchases. I'll be coming back in December and January to talk about the last two items. So far this year, 55 police officers have been killed by gunfire. The patches that you see here represent the departments that all those police officers worked for. Tragically, since we've created this slide, three more police officers have been killed in the line of duty. There was three incidents across our nation where police officers were essentially ambushed while on traffic stops in their patrol cars. One of those officers died and two other ones were severely injured. Just the nature of our business and where we're going with this, which is very good time that we're looking at adding these six police officers right now. So in the past, we discussed the threats. We discussed the concerns about the potential ambush circumstances we're trying to prevent. We discussed the diversionary tactics, one that we had here in our town where they attempted to, through ruse, get the police department officers to respond to the east side of town for a crime that was going to occur on the west side of town. Fortunately, we were able to apprehend them. And then the act of local sabotage we discussed was an area department had lug nuts removed from patrol vehicles. I discussed the police officers being killed, and as it states on the slide, that's a 41% increase over last year. So it's very tragic. We discussed in the past the previous, the immediate actions we took. We increased our number of two officer patrol cars. We permitted overtime to make sure we're increasing our staffing on the road. We reinforced individual officer safety by some training and training bulletins, making sure the sergeants talked to the officers. We also did many enhancements. Somewhere in process, we just expedited things. We upgraded our body armor in the patrol vehicles. Lieutenant Gordon worked in that project, and essentially it's to make sure that every patrol vehicle has what's called rifle-ready, I'm sorry, what's the term again?
Rifle-rated.
Rifle-rated, I'm sorry. Rifle-rated armor in each of our patrol vehicles, so we made sure of that. We're also looking at building security enhancements. Some of the things are relatively minor. We can cover through our regular budget process, like screening windows and things like that. So we're here today to briefly discuss increasing our minimum staffing on each of our three shifts by one officer minimum increase. And in order to do that, we have to add two officers per shift. So with three shifts, two officers per shift, we're asking for six additional police officers. What that'll do is allow us to increase the number of two officer vehicles around the road, and it will guarantee that we will have two officer vehicles. Not every one, but we'll have more. And as we've discussed in the past, we don't throw out the numbers of officers or staff at any time because that is not information that we want to get out in public form. We anticipate the cost of this is going to be $630,000. That concludes the presentation. We have a, within your packet, we have a motion that we're asking for approval of that. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from Council? Mayor Protem Hoderek?
I just want to say the addition of the six officers has my support, and I really appreciate the feedback from our police officers and the follow-through of city leadership and the police command on that feedback. You know, paralleling these efforts, our initiatives that you take to protect our community through building trust between our officers and the public, and I would say and argue that that also protects our officers because the relationships matter. When our officers are seen as human beings keeping us safe and looking out for our best interests, they're safer as a result. And I really believe strongly in that. Can you update us, provide highlights of some of the efforts in this area, you know, most commonly referred to as community policing, implicit bias training, things like that that you have going on with the department as well?
Certainly. The Troy Police Department enjoys very good support from this group, the city council, from city management, and from the community business and the residents. We have very good support with that. What we do is we do outreach to our community on a regular basis. We maintain our community services section, which are officers and a sergeant, which are directly assigned to do community outreach. So they do various community events. Many of you attend those events, so I won't go through a litany of those, but you know we get them out there and they're involved. We get into the schools. We do homeowners groups. We do presentations. We're out there meeting with the people that live in this community. We also do outreach with some other groups that are very timely with what's going on in our society. One of them is All PAC, which is Advocates and Leaders for Police and Community Trust. This is a group that meets regularly, and they talk about issues on where you've got problems with police in the community not getting along. Fortunately for Troy, we don't have those issues, so we're attending these meetings just showing overall from a region that we're concerned, we want to be involved and part of that. You're all familiar with the Troy Interfaith Group. We're involved with them to make sure we're working with all our churches in town. And we were, the impetus to get started, the group called the Troy Alliance Against Health Against Hate Crimes. And what we do with them is we get together and talk, and if there's any issues on hate crimes, we discuss it. That also, because it's Troy, tends to be on a regional basis because we don't have those issues in town. So we got a little bit of, we do outreach, make sure we don't have those issues, and we're blessed that we don't have those issues. So we keep doing that, and hopefully it keeps going in the right direction. There is a lot we do with our community policing efforts. When I started, we were going and we were what's called a warrior-type police department. We looked at ourselves as going out there and being crime fighters. Through time and effort, we've evolved. We start out with our team policing and our projects like that where we evolved into being more part of the community and in the fabric of the community. So it's been going very well, and I hope that answers the question yet.
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from Council? Councilman Henderson?
Mayor, I'd like to move I-4, addition of six police officers, as printed.
Support.
I think this is a very important resolution to us. I think it should be read into the record. I'll be happy to do that, or I think, would that be okay to read it into the record?
Whereas Troy City Council expressed concern about the recent national epidemic of violence against police officers during a city council meeting on July 25th, 2016, and whereas Troy City Council reached a consensus to offer support to the Troy Police Department in the form of additional funding necessary to ensure the safety of our police personnel, and whereas the Troy Police Department had taken immediate actions to increase building security, training, and authorized overtime to uniform personnel to ensure an increase in staffing. And whereas during a regular city council meeting on October 10th, 2016, Troy City Council authorized a budget amendment to transfer money from the general fund to the capital projects fund for police department perimeter fencing and awarded a contract for the installation of perimeter fencing around a police department parking lot. And whereas increasing minimum staffing per shift would enhance officer safety and allow for more two officer patrol vehicles. Therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the addition of six uniform personnel to the police department.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I-4, which is the addition of six police officers, as printed and read by Councilman Henderson this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. We'll keep trying to do what we can to help. Thank you. Next is I-5, a financial modifications for the Troy Family Days. I will call on City Attorney Bloom for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
And this item actually stems from the last meeting, November 14th, the special meeting that city council had with the North Woodward Community Foundation. And at that point in time, it was a consensus of the city council that the 2015 and 2016 obligations to the city of Troy be wiped clean and there be a clean slate and that there be negotiations for a new agreement with the North Woodward Community Foundation presented to council at a later time. So the proposed resolution does that. It wipes the slate clean, if you will, and it directs us to negotiate a new agreement. And it does have a timeline on that for 75 days, and that was brought forward because Mr. Teetz had indicated that they need to have an agreement in time so that they can plan for the festival for the next year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions for City Attorney Bloom? Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I-5, financial modifications for Troy Family Days agreement as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Baker and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek that we approve I-5, the financial modifications for Troy Family Days agreement as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman McCowen, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion on the items this evening? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Hodrick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes if you are here this evening on a consent agenda item. They've all been approved. Next item is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none in the docket this evening. So next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call upon Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city administration. Before I get to my item, I need to clear something up. Kathy Russ inadvertently made it sound like maybe I was kind of a cheap screw. What happened was she told me that they were just $40 short from the goal tonight, so I gave her this $50, and she happened to mention that. She didn't mention, though, that I had previously given a substantial donation. So don't people think that I'm cheap? I needed to say that.
Jim, the last thing that somebody could accuse you of is being cheap. Believe me, I know that.
Anyway.
And thank you for your support to the library. It was very kind of what you did this evening.
Thank you. What I really want to talk about was what's going to be on the agenda next week, and that's replacing creative endeavors. So we're at the community center with a wellness center, and I don't think that's a very good idea to replace it. Now whether or not you bring a wellness center in, that's one issue, but getting rid of endeavor, creative endeavors, that should not happen, in my opinion. The city was in financial trouble, as you know, a few years back, cut back on everything. Most things, they've come back. Employees' salaries, we're going to add more police officers, we're going to help out Troy Days. The city really hasn't done anything, brought anything back that they took away from the senior community. And I'm really not asking to do that, although it would be nice. We would certainly appreciate it. I know all my friends and the friends of Troy Seniors Organization would love it, as well as all the volunteers and stuff. But what I don't want you to do is take stuff away, and that would be taking away the creative endeavors. It's a craft store there. There's 100 and some seniors that make crafts that are sold there. And it's two things with the seniors. One is it's a mental health issue for a lot of them, you know? They, a lot of them are, you know, widows, widowers, or whatever. They don't have anything else, and this gives them kind of a purpose to make stuff. And the other is, a lot of them don't really have a lot of money, and the income they get off that is important to them. So I don't, if you put the wellness center in, I would like you to put the creative center someplace. Where creative endeavors is now, that glass thing that was built, you could build the same thing like that up by the front entrance, that big hallway down towards the fitness center, or you could block off some of those windows in front of the pool, because people don't like you looking at them in there anyway, and build it there and put the creative endeavors there. So I'm not sure that we should even have the wellness center, but I don't have a big issue with that as long as you save creative endeavors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Any council comment regarding that? Councilman Baker?
I just want to say thank you, Jim, for always looking out for Troy seniors and for speaking out on issues like this, and I couldn't agree with you more on this issue. So thank you for coming forward tonight.
Any other comments from council? I've gotten maybe a half a dozen emails in support of the same thing that Jim spoke about. Is staff looking at possibly relocating to a smaller room, or would you prefer to comment next week when this comes up? City Manager Kishnik?
There will be a lot of comment and a lot of discussion and a lot of analysis at the next, it's a December 5th meeting, I believe, but I have asked staff to go back and look at, are there any other places where this creative endeavors could be? Is there an option other than just putting them out of business? So staff is looking at that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I got this feeling that we're going to be able to work this out, so. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Mayor Pro Tem Hodrick?
'Tis the season for holiday announcements here. I wanted to mention that the Troy Women's Association each year sponsors the winter warmer trees at three locations in Troy. Everyone is invited to donate new mittens, gloves, scarves, and hats to hang on the tree. These winter warmer donations will be distributed to local organizations supporting needy children and families. The trees will be on display through December 20th. There's one here at Troy City Hall, there's one at the Troy Library, and there's one at the Troy Community Center. When you're out and about and shopping at small businesses, maybe you could pick up a hat or gloves to drop off at one of the trees here. On a related note, watch for your Winter Troy Today in your mailboxes next week. It's going to be packed with information, including the upcoming holiday events, including Christmas at the Historic Village and our annual Christmas tree lighting in Winter Wonderland, which has been switched up a bit this year. It's on a Friday on December 9th instead of a Wednesday night, from 6:30 to 9:00. So your little ones, you don't have to hustle them home into pajamas to get ready for school the next day. You can plan an evening out that isn't rushed, and it premises to be a nice twist on the annual event. Then one more thing, you can drop off new unwrapped toys for children in need for the Toys for Tots program. Boxes are at City Hall and the Historic Village.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilman McCowen?
So as Mayor Pro Tem Hodrick alluded to this week, so holidays are coming up, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. One thing I'd like to specifically mention, I saw on the Troy Times Facebook page today about a fatal car accident that occurred last week, and alcohol was the cause of that. And it's a great time of year, it's a great time to celebrate. Please be careful if you have been imbibing with alcohol. Make sure that you're not driving if you're not able to. My brother was involved in the car accident last year on his way home. He lives in Indiana. On his way home the night before Thanksgiving, and his car was totaled. He's fortunate to be alive. So please be careful. There are a lot of options out there. Have a friend drive you, call an Uber. If you're not able to drive, please don't drive, so.
Thank you. Good message. Any other comments from council? Councilwoman Abraham?
I was so pleased to see Kathy Russ here today to talk about three items in regards to the library, and I'm especially pleased that the endowment fund has reached its goal. I think it's six weeks ahead of time. However, I still want to remind folks of my council member challenge, where I will match funds up to $500 from council or city staff, and let's see if we can't get that $20,000 up even to a higher rate. So the gauntlet has been thrown down.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Just to echo Councilman McCowen's sentiments about Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving marks the beginning of the holiday season, and it's one of my favorite seasons, and it's not because we get to eat to excess, but if the family comes over, it's just a great time to get together. So enjoy your holidays and enjoy your families, and let's all be thankful for everything that we have in this great country.
Very good. Any other comments? Are there any comments about the reports? There weren't many reports in the packet this evening, but any comments on the reports? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session request this evening. So I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy the holidays, and we'll see you back in December. We are adjourned.